Welcome everyone. Today is February 20th, 2024. This is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. It's a motion to call the meeting to order.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Wona had a conflict of schedule, so he will not be with us tonight. It's a pretty late agenda. There's some minutes for February 9th, 2024, regular meeting. Motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
The first order of business and new business are cameras. I was working out at the Veterans Memorial Park over at Pope Park a while back, and we have to take down some camera stuff when we were out there. They were out there doing some work and modifying it, and it came to my attention at that point that not all our municipal buildings and properties are currently being under surveillance. We have Nick Monticello here, the Town Accountant in IT. I'll call them specialists. So I had a conversation with him, and it just, you know, it got a little bit more concerning as we haven't, we don't have all our facilities under one network, coming to the same servers, and all of our buildings being camered. And I know that Nick Monticello has done a fabulous job. He secured a grant on the first round. It's called the Municipal Fiber Grant, $250,000, which is incredible, Nick. So thank you very much on behalf of the Board and our taxpayers of Kuschna for getting that grant. And he's put down the fiber throughout certain areas of the town. And he's let me know that there's no reason why we can't do what I'm talking about, which is putting surveillance cameras basically, you know, anywhere they're not. Golf, we have a lot of expensive equipment that should be watched over a little bit better than what we are. Pope Park's already in and tied into the new fiber network. I think it's Fire Station Number Two down the north end, you know, towards the golf course. That network is, if I'm correct, Nick, that fiber, that private fiber for everybody at home, it's private. It's owned by the town through this grant that you received in golf on behalf of the town. That fiber is already laid throughout that area, right?
Yeah, so Station Two would actually be part of Phase Two of the fiber. So we had it run two parallel lines, one down Middle Road that hit the EMS building, the police station, kept going, library, DPW, and the school. And then we had one on Middle that ran all the way down to the golf course. So the Phase Two would now be completing that circuit. So it would either be through Leonard or Lake Street, which I know there was some attention to go down Lake Street. So we were thinking going through Lake Street would then give us that completed circuit. And from there, we'd be able to pick up Station Two, the Long Plain Museum. And then another important one would be to see if we could tie into the tower over on Peckham, since the whip would end right around Lake Street. So it'd just be a little further over there. So that would be for the Phase Two part of it, which they are releasing another eligibility for another $250,000. So I think because of public safety being tied into that, that would help.
Excellent.
Yeah, that'd be truly incredible for your efforts on behalf of the townspeople and the taxpayers, right? And the Board. If we were to get that additional 250, we're talking a half a million dollars in grant money due to your efforts. So thank you very much for that. So I'm just, I'm concerned. I think it's now that we have what we would call dock fiber.
Yep.
Instead of having independent surveillance things that, you know, aren't in the best interest of the town, Mr. Monticello's efforts for the fiber network. Whatever we have available now as far as the first phase of the fiber network, whatever municipal buildings and properties we don't have linked to that, I think we need to get linked.
Yeah, because we have it budgeted for, you know, to account for all the buildings that we had tied in through that first phase. So we do have the funding for all the equipment to, you know, add in the cameras, add in whatever switches we need.
And I know you mentioned that article, so there's a little bit. Is there still some funds left from that?
Yep, yep.
So I think the moral of the story is we spent all that work, well, mostly Nick spent all that work and efforts getting the grants, and he's pursuing the next round of grant money. I think it's in the town's best interest that we put all surveillance on the one umbrella and carry it to our network and servers for the optimal security purposes, right?
Yep, library had just approved also, so we'll be going to the library next to make sure. And a big part of it was because of public safety. So because we're a private internal network, you know, we're able to feed that directly to the police station. All the external cameras for, you know, security. I know they reference them when they're looking for something or something like that. So it just helps keep eyes out there for them too.
And the quality of the cameras that we're now installing is second to none. I know you've seen some video footage. I've seen the video footage compared to what we've had, you know, three, four, five years ago. Doesn't even come close. I mean, we really capture a lot.
A lot of detail, a lot of helpful information.
Yep.
So, and I think it's nice that the feed can go to the police department, right? And they can just scroll screens. Is that a capability that PD would have? Is they can, even if they only have one screen, they can scroll from Park to DPW to schools?
Yep, so they actually, they make a device called a viewport. So if they were able to mount a TV on the wall, we could send a preset number like cameras and basically goes off movement. So if you have a screen with, say, 15 cameras, anytime there's a movement on one, it would switch to that movement camera. So you'd have full visibility of all of them. And then whenever there's a movement on one, say there's 20 cameras, it would change one of those to wherever the movement is.
All right, so I guess we need a motion to...
We need a motion to have the security cameras for the fiber network installed in all the Phase One buildings.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nick, again, thank you very much for your hard work on the grant. I know you're going after the next round, so thank you. I can't thank you enough for the efforts and the hard work that you've been doing on the IT side as long as far in it, and as well as the Town Accountant's side. So thank you, Nick.
Yeah, no problem.
Finding the money, maybe we're gonna spend it in installing. It's pretty nice.
Yeah, exactly. I'd like to give a shout out to Tony and Lucas too for helping. You know, they're huge help.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, they were the folks with you. Lucas was over there at the Pope Park when I was over there putting the signs in for the Veterans Memorial.
Yep.
You guys were over there doing a new installation over there and tying it to the fiber. So absolutely, great, great folks as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Write a first refusal, 474 Middle Road. There's some letters from Conservation having some interest in it. Little bit of concern if this, roughly 27 acres at 474 Middle Road, there's a bona fide offer with the amount of $600,000. It is in forestry, which triggers the right of first refusal for the town. The planning board did not recommend going forward with it. Board of Assessors did have interest. They recommend movement forward with the purchase of the property. So two out of the three do. The only concern that I want to bring up is when we were notified was November 20th, 2023. It shouldn't have taken this long to get into the Board of Selectmen's office. So I would just ask that we do a better job when we are contacted with a right of first refusal so that gives the Board some time to do their own due diligence before other bodies of government chime in on it. And we could share that due diligence with them before they start making decisions if need be. It is a nice piece of property. It's roughly 27 acres, as I mentioned before. There is a lot of wetlands there. However, it could be an asset for open space and recreation to the townspeople. We haven't gone forward with a large purchase of property in a long time. This one abuts other conservation land on the other side of the river. And then from there, that conservation land on the other side of the river off Middle Road goes straight to the golf course. So it would be just another connecting piece, pretty much, if the town were to go forward all the way from Middle Road to Main Street. We'd own a nice swath through basically of open space and recreation. So, you know, it's something that I would like to continue pursuing. The deadline, because of the 120 days, by national law, we have 120 days. So if that notice was given on November 20th, our deadline would be March 20th to make a decision within 120 days. And then we have 90 days once we make a decision to buy, to come up with funding. So if March 20th is the deadline and November 20th is when we actually receive the first correspondence for this right of first refusal, that would make the 120 days March 20th. We need to make a decision prior to that. And then we would have 90 days to go to town meeting and secure funding from there. That's how the law reads.
Okay.
So obviously, being on this short time crunch, we basically got four weeks. Mr. Kelly and I will look into some possible funding sources if at all possible, bring it back to the Board. But I think it's something that we bring back at the latest we can within that March 20th deadline. We have to make sure that the November 20th is the first time we receive correspondence for this. And the letters seem to make me believe that November 20th is. And if it is, March 20 is a deadline. We'll figure that out as well. And then we'll figure out whether or not the town through CPC funds and things of the like have funds to move forward with it. And I know that there's some interest. The Board of Assessors has interest in the chairman. Specifically, Mr. Brown had some interest, and he would have liked to have been here. But unfortunately, I didn't read his letter until today to ask him to come in, you know, have that dialogue with Mr. Brown, the chairman of the Board of Assessors. So the next time that we do meet on this subject matter, I will make sure that I contact Mr. Brown and have him in for his input with the Board as well. We'll see what happens with what we can come up with with funding sources. I would imagine most of it would be derived from CPC. We haven't purchased land again. It should be a pretty good bank there because we haven't done any land purchase in a long time. I can't even remember the last line of land purchase that we did from CPC. So there's gotta be bank there.
I would think so.
We'll figure it out. I think we all need to look at it again. Maybe we'll have, Mr. Kelly and I might try to schedule a meeting with the Chairman of Conservation Planning and the Board of Assessors to have that internal dialogue with them folks and see, you know, the overall opinion of what's going on with this parcel of land. So for right now, no action needs to be taken. Mr. Kelly, I would just ask that you confirm that the November 20th was the date of notice to the town so that we don't fall out of the 120-day decision-making. It does appear from you, "On November 20th, 2023, this office receives a purchase and sale agreement as a bona fide offer for the town's right of first option from Attorney Nicholas Gomes in regard to the above-mentioned property from Carolyn Moore. Please return your recommendations to this office as soon as possible." So hopefully that is accurate.
That's one that was stamped in.
Okay, so again, if that puts us there, we would have after the March 20th deadline to make a decision to activate our right of first refusal. It would then give us 90 days, which would become June 20th. And if we're gonna be doing later sending town meeting date, we'll fall inside of there to make town meeting.
Perfect.
So no actions needed. Next, we have a reserve fund transfer. Unfortunately, postage funds. Looks like this is...
This is for the...
Town clerk, I would imagine, town elections.
With the town elections, with the notifications for the presidential primary and the town election. We are gonna need more postage. Next year, we plan to segregate the election for to register our postage in their budget item. But right now, all postage is in the our office line item.
Yeah, so I'll take this as another unfunded mandate by the state, right? Requiring us to do mail-in ballots and all this other stuff that, you know, I don't know what happened to the old school days. We come in, you can do early voting, absentee voting, but this mail-in stuff's starting to impact our operational budget, which is not in good shape right now. So regardless of whether or not we would be, it's a lot of money to be... This is just a shortfall, correct? On top of other postage that we already outbudgeted?
Yes, and last year, we took the postage for the tax billings out of this line item and put it in the Treasury Collector's Office. So we're gonna follow soon and put this in the town clerk's.
Maybe they'll change their mind instead of doing all this mail-in voting stuff?
Would be nice.
It would be nice. It's just, I call it a crock of crap, right? But anyways, is there a motion to approve the reserve fund transfer on the amount of $15,000 for postage?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a golf liquor license changer manager. Take a Mr. Prevaluski off the license and ask and have the town administrator as the liquor license, the manager of the liquor license at Kuschna River Valley Golf Course. Mr. Kelly, do you have anything to add to this conversation?
Originally, the employee at the golf course had concerns, wanted individual umbrella insurance. Our insurance covers it, so it's not to lose the license. I told our staff to put my name on, and we'll go forward with that. It preserves the license. Of course, that part of the facility's not open right now, but it preserves the license for the town. And at the same time, whatever the demands were for insurance were ridiculous because our check with our insurance company, Hub and Tidashal, and they fully cover everything.
Well, we'll have future discussions on that, right?
Correct.
Is there a motion to approve to have Mr. Kelly, the town administrator, as the manager of the liquor license for Kuschna River Valley Golf Course?
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is just the call for the annual town meeting date, June 3rd. So it will be after town elections. However, it is late for a town meeting. However, it's the best schedule for the town clerk. Ourselves, the schools, given where we're at with revenues and waiting for state figures from the state, I think it's in the best interest of the town. Normally, we would be set out somewhere in May, mid-May, or whatever for town meeting. But a couple more weeks give us a little bit more flexibility with wherever we're gonna be.
Yep.
Articles and things of the like, the posting is 15 days early.
Actually, it's an annual town meeting, so it's seven.
The annual, right, but don't we go into a special?
I don't think we need a special this year. We're gonna go straight through the budget.
All right, all right, whatever we're doing. Just because we go in, just because we usually do annual, but then we turn and we go into special and...
I would rather the special in the fall when we really know what's going on.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Just so the chair, through the chair, the third of June would be the town meeting. Would be posting the warrant on the 20th of May. The newspaper ads and the printing would be at the first week in May. The Board would approve the final warrant April 30th. Warrant would go to council April 24th. So between you calling, town meeting now, and department articles, I would think that all articles should come in from departments by March 25.
Yeah, so obviously, there's not a lot of revenue out there to be doing articles. So that, we need to make sure that if there's anyone that's looking to submit an article, it's an absolute emergency and not just, you know, a want, a wishless want. This is a tough year for revenues in the town's budget, operating budget. So with that, and anybody, if planning, CONCOM, we know we're gonna have a conversation about stormwater. Those articles need to be in front of this Board way sooner, not at the absolute end. We're rushing to figure out language that are in articles. All those articles, if planning's got anything for zoning and things of the like, they need to get that to us, the Board of Selectmen ASAP, not wait until the deadline for spending articles. So if that communication go out to all departments, mostly planning, CONCOM?
We've had discussions with planning and CONCOM. I've had discussions with the town clerk to make sure if there are any bylaw changes, that the bylaw committee is all set to hold their hearing. Their planning didn't plan for any zoning changes, so we wouldn't have the multiple hearings. But with stormwater and if there's anything on soil, those would be bylaw. And so it would be a bylaw hearing, public hearing.
Yep, and if we definitely, I know based on past conversations, we're a little bit behind. We got that on the agenda. We'll talk about that. But we need that done ASAP for the public's best interests so that when we hit town meeting, we can't be criticized saying this hasn't been properly vetted with the public. It's gotta go through its process with this Board, CONCOM, planning, whatever needs to be done. The vetting process has been laid out. We give plenty of people time to digest it and be informed. So when they go to town meeting, we're not getting slotted with questions that can be answered throughout the time from when we do the article, make, you know, approve articles if it's a bylaw and let them sit and we'll post them so everybody can see it. Hopefully, give everybody 30 or 60 days prior to town meeting. It's pretty much what it's called for instead of rushing everything.
Yep.
I know I've heard some of that stuff before. We haven't had time to review things, and there's been some discontent from residents. And I'm trying to, this year as chairman, make sure that those articles are out there online publicly so everybody can read them, vet it. If anybody has questions, concerns, they can come to a meeting, speak to our office, has to be put on the agenda if need be. That's normally not what happens, but if somebody has that many concerns about something, I'm fine. We put it on agenda and vetting it out.
I've got tentative April 2nd as the Board considering articles. Of course, you have the normal articles of the revolving funds.
Yeah, that's not what I'm talking about.
CPC.
Earlier, we want everything, like if we're gonna do, we're gonna do, we are gonna do stormwater, right? So that one I want early. We're gonna have that discussion now.
I had a discussion with Mr. Francois last week.
All right, so is there a motion to call annual town meeting for June 3rd, 2024?
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Under Old Business, the IT CATV position. There's some information here in front of us. I'll turn it over to Mr. Kelly, but the only thing I do want to say before you get into too much detail is I think the job description goes far beyond the scope of what we need. And the education, again, is far beyond, so recommended...
They preferred education.
I get it. It's, I don't, I don't think we need that. I mean, you're never finding anybody with a master's degree. So that deters other people to say, well, they want, really prefer a master's degree. In my opinion, that don't even be there. We have qualifications, bachelor's degree, computer science. Quite honestly, Mr. Kelly, for the amount that we're looking to pay for this position for an IT person, which is $60,000 if I read this correctly, nobody would...
65, yep.
Nobody with a master's degree in information technology is interested in that job for that amount of money. So I just don't want, we've posted jobs before where we're looking for rocket scientists. And I believe that when certain people may think that they're qualified and start reading the advertisement and they're interested and then they see certain things within the advertisement that may be detering them from applying. So I just don't want to keep advertising jobs and having no interest in jobs based on what we're asking for. So with that...
We can remove that.
I don't know what, if you have anything else, but we need to look at this. I think Mr. Hinkley and when Mr. Wona gets back, maybe take a look at this. And I know there's some things in here under the essential functions that I would ask Mr. Kelly to pull out of. And I know Mr. Kelly's sentiment on job descriptions is put everything in there and...
No one can ever say that it's covered.
But I think there's another way to do it without putting all your limits into words that we can put on MMA and things. So I think this might be another way of advertising and be a little bit more summarized, in other words?
Well, we can, the ad would not be the job description.
Right.
We can...
For a basic, you know, basically, you know, you list a few things out in the job description and then we just put in any other request made by the town administrator and/or Board of Selectmen so that no matter what we ask, they have to do it. And they can't say that's not part of it because that's not what you've responded to.
You don't actually have a discussion with the recent court decision that screwed that up.
But I think, I think that there's, you know, there's a couple of parts of funding sources. I'm fine with the proposal.
And then we have to...
Some conversations that we're gonna need. So we got a little, little bit of time to try to figure this out. So whatever you can do, Mr. Hinkley, with Mr. Kelly, and, you know, whatever concerns you may have and doing whatever you need to do with Mr. Kelly. But we have, you know, without saying it too much, we have a lot of other things that we need to be discussing before we can go out and advertise. So that being said, we'll figure it out moving forward. But are you okay with the proposal for funding sources?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Kelly, do you need anything else from...
I don't need a vote. I just need a direction from the Board.
Okay, boss. Mr. Kelly, fiscal year '25 revenue.
Just so the Board knows, the Town Accountant and I are meeting with the FinCom and the Budget Subcommittee of the School Department. We are looking at a serious deficit. We want to give the School Department notice as to that deficit and ask them to sharpen their pencil. I know you're having Old Colony come in at your next meeting and for, so we could request that of them too.
Yes, sir. Look, it's, it's not just the Kuschna, right? We're, you know, based on the people I talked to, and Mr. Kelly, you have a lot of communications with other town managers. So, you know, it's, it's happening, right? I've talked about, I've talked about this, this day coming. I call it the Day of Reckoning. We're in tough times and it's, you know, right now, the economy is slowing as well. So that's gonna hamper new growth in the future as well. So there's only so much money that a municipality collects in in revenue to go around, to meet everyone's needs. That's the conversation I've been having for over a decade with everyone. Sometimes people get it, other times they don't. Just some of these requests are just totally ludicrous, in my opinion. And everybody should understand that. I mean, you look at somebody's people's ask. When you're, when you're asking for twice as much, in some cases, as what we bring in and prop two and a half levy increase? What are you doing? Now, what are we doing?
And you are folding in the one-time COVID money into the operating budget where it never had a business to be.
Big no-no.
It's a dangerous game.
I've had, we had that conversation. If everybody needs to be reminded of that conversation, they can easily watch Board of Selectmen's meeting in March of 2000, might have been April 2020 when COVID hit. And we started receiving monies, funds in to deal with that. It's the first thing that came out of my mouth, not to be used for an operational budget because when it disappears, you ain't gonna have that fund, that revenue. If people made that mistake, they need to back that out and figure it out from there, right? We didn't do it from the town side that I'm aware of, where we started hiring positions. We, we didn't do it from the town side that I'm aware of, where we started hiring positions or putting people in positions just thinking, oh, the money's always gonna be there. Well, we knew that back then, because I said it to everyone, the money's not gonna be there. And now it's coming home to roost. Shame on whoever's doing it, we'll figure that out in the future and have that dialogue with them. And it's just the town's people can't afford to continue moving forward and, you know, on average, we spend, you look at the last three or four year run rate, year over year, the town's averaging one point two million, and I've been saying that you roughly have eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty, depending on where new growth comes in with your prop two and a half levy increase, right? You're spending three hundred and fifty, four hundred more than what you're normally bringing in revenue, it's not a good recipe.
No, it is not at all.
We've exhausted, based on the recap sheet that Mr. Kelly and I have been working on now for the last couple of years together, we're exhausting our revenue streams as far as the floating revenue goes, right? And everybody says, oh, you, you're lying. We're not lying, you, you have a revenue, and I'm just gonna pick one out of the hat, license and permits, it's a variable. And smart financial people know that when you have a revenue stream that's a variable, there's only a certain percentage that you're comfortable allocating for the operating budget because at any given point, you can drop below that threshold and you're screwed. We're, we're at the top end of our revenue streams as far as allocation goes, in my opinion. So again, we've been stretching ourselves, stretching ourselves, and stretching ourselves to try to keep everybody happy.
And we've, I'll say that the staff, uh, the town staff has done almost everything they can with one-time fixes to collect additional revenue. And we're getting to the point now that all those rabbits that we've been pulling out of the hat are gone, the hat's empty.
I agree. So, you know, uh, the board of selectmen, town administrator and FinCom, got a lot of work to do, and we'll figure, we're gonna, we've, I hate to say it, but we always figured it out and we're gonna do everything we can to make cuts on our side, um, but we need everybody's cooperation in this process. Um, it's, it, we don't have a lot more room on our side. If you, people wanna look at the budgets, be more than happy, but you got salaries on the town side and the rest of it's pretty much empty holes. There's not much left in the expense, um, part of it outside of salaries. If you look at it, they've been depleted over the years. I don't know what else to say other than we'll try to work the numbers. Hopefully, everybody will be cooperating with the budget process. You know, Mr. Kelly, you're gonna have communications with the schools. As you said, Old Colony will come in and have a conversation with the board. Um, we'll just send the message, right? That's what needs to be done. I mean, you just, we just don't have the revenue.
It's not the year to be a spender.
Just, you can't continue to spend like drunken sailors and expect the party never to end. That's the problem. You, you know, you, you gotta be, it's called fiscal responsibility, right? And when you lose that, that's when you end up in trouble. And I keep saying it all the time, if you were running a private business, the way it's been run, certain areas of it, the town's been run, you'd be bankrupt years ago. But a lot of people just keep thinking that there's an endless pit of money coming from the taxpayers, and I'll be the first to tell you, that's not happening. I don't think the taxpayers are, um, in a good position themselves with the way inflation's been running away, and I know the federal government, the senior center that's down here, the federal government, they keep telling everybody it's gonna be okay, it's gonna be okay, but it's not okay, and they can't keep printing money either. I don't know.
And the state's doing nine C cuts because they can't even afford the programs that they're taking care of now.
Well, we surely don't need to be adding any more programs with the southern border. I'll leave it at that, that's a shame. So, all right, Mr. Kelly, anything else on the, uh, revenue deficit side?
Uh, no, but, uh, every week, we'll keep the board apprised of what's going on.
Appreciate it.
Uh, and, uh, we're looking at, uh, the, uh, FinCom having one meeting with just O C and one meeting with the school department separate.
All right, so I'm just gonna do, well, you want me to do them separate, D E P, Stormwater, Buzzards Bay? I don't have anything in my book, so you wanna.
I just wanna, I just wanna inform the board that there is scuttlebutt going around, the D E P is rewriting their regs. I'm gonna be meeting, uh, with, uh, our stormwater consultant and, uh, also our M S four consultant and, uh, and then, uh, Thursday, and we'll start to get briefed on that. I just wanted the board to know, and this is probably gonna be on every agenda until you folks present the, uh, stormwater bylaw.
So, we got a meeting Tuesday, next Tuesday?
Yep.
We're gonna have Mr. McQ in?
Thursday this week.
We're gonna talk to him, but what are we doing Tuesday? We gonna have him in to have this, or you, you and I just gonna have a little dialogue?
We'll have a dialogue with him. Hopefully, he'll give us our, uh, a plan as to where we should go with this D E P regs. And, uh, he'll report on the M S four, and we used him in the past to review the stormwater bylaw. There is not many changes from last year to this, as I understand, but we wanna make sure he updates it.
Yeah, so you just said you and I might do something Thursday morning with him? So if we're gonna do that, we just wanna make sure, and I think Mr. Hinkley, you know, you can punch in on this, but from my perspective is I don't like having a bylaw and then a year later, having to amend a bylaw. So I think that's the forward-looking that we need to be with, um, Conoco, where we just tell them, you know, I understand regs change and we might need to be changing things, but they're not, shouldn't be like consistent, so just get us up to speed. Most people at home, if you don't understand what's going on, is the town has a stormwater bylaw that, um, people and developers need to abide by when developing property, but what we also have as a town is what they call a small M S four permit as well. And we, the town, need to fill out annual permits on what we're doing, um, to prevent pollution into water bodies and things of the like. So that's what Conoco's doing on behalf of the town, um, and we gotta figure out, you know, the direction of what we're doing on our side. Of course, he's gonna be looking at the stormwater bylaws that we need to put in place for individuals and developers when they're coming into the town.
We need all of this coordinated.
That's right, and it, and it all works cohesively as one moving forward, and I guess a lot of people have talked to me and said, chief, it's great, what am I doing? Why do I have to do this? And I'm like, well, that's because we have to do certain things as well, so you can't just be discharging onto town property because later on, we're gonna be fined for all our faults because somebody else is discharging bad stuff onto roadways and land and going into our waterways and getting into our rivers and things of the like. So yes, it, it's, it sucks, I'm just gonna say it, it's difficult, um, but it's part of protecting the environment and sometimes these regulatory bodies, E P A and D E P go a little too far. Um, I think they're starting to get a little far-reaching, um, into the private sector and pockets of the taxpayers, so hopefully we'll have a legislative body to depend on to say, hey, 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 you know, pump the brakes a little bit here, right? As my dad used to say, Rome wasn't built in a day. So don't jam things down our throat that don't need to be jammed down our throat, i.e. the nitrogen crap that they were trying to do.
Mr. Chairman, the new, the new regs proposed by D E P are very extensive and will put quite a big burden on conservation and planning. Uh, and it mostly involves stormwater and any watershed areas whatsoever, and it's very, very restrictive. So I believe public comment's still open, and if you go to the D E P site, you can still see their proposed regulations. Uh, a little too detailed to get in right now, but I suggest anybody that is interested should go to the site and actually look at the past meetings that they've had. Um, I just found out about this today, so I haven't watched any of the hearings, um, but I fully intend to because the regulations are definitely strong regulations that will have fairly decent effect on anybody that's trying to build or complete a project near any body of water.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it, it's, it's the, the new email that's gone out, right? But that firm, um, and, and I forget the name of the firm, I did browse through that PDF this morning, uh, my office sent out. Um, it's, it's truly alarming, and I think that the town, you know, maybe from, Jamie, maybe from, um, Conoco's perspective is maybe it was, it's in the town's best interest to follow them, that PDF that's been circulated from our office for those, those, you know, Harvard people, the one we just got out. I don't, I don't know everything in my head right now, I've been dealing with a lot today with different things that are going on in the town. Um, but I did, it's the one he's, Mr. Hinkley's alluding to. Um, it seems very alarming at the nature of their letter to the town, asking for some cooperation from us, or it seems like we do have some allies in this. And I think that the town needs to do a response, um, along with everybody else, so if we can get all our peers and maybe you can communicate that through your town administrators' meetings and see what, you know, Fairhaven, Metapoiset, Marion are doing, even Dartmouth, Westport, they're all part of this.
Yeah, it's the whole south coast.
So whatever we can do for communication, see what they're doing for, you know, a public comment period before that closes, but I think, you know, we would look pretty foolish if we, the board of selectmen, along with some add-on petitions from conservation and planning, board of health, whatever it may be, and get all that support and put it in letter form and send a letter, um, for public comment on the new regs. I think we need to put some together, and I think that maybe Kevin from Conoco could help us out with that.
And the, uh, Kevin, and then the chairs of the board of health, planning and.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I'm saying, we need to get some, in some dissuade there, it's not just coming from the board of selectmen, it's coming from all of our entities that are being impacted truly, right? They're making, unfortunately, the state and certain regulatory agencies are saying this on this hand and then expecting us to do this on this hand, right? So we, the state is saying, we're gonna jam more housing down your throats and tell you how to zone your property and we're gonna take a lo, away your local zoning authority, right? And then on this hand, you got the regulatory arms saying, whoa, hold on a minute, if you're gonna do all of that, you, the way you're gonna develop that land, you, you're gonna abide by X, Y, and Z, and that's gonna cost you a million dollars to do it. So, you know, which one is it? You can't have both, right? You can't tell us, you know, hey, you know, we want you to be pro-development and, you know, fifty-five and old like we passed last year, and then on the other stroke of the dime, the other regulatory arms are saying to us, whoa, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, if you're gonna develop that property, you know, you need to spend a million dollars to do it, nobody's gonna be doing any of this stuff. And it's gonna crush, again, part of our revenue source is new growth. And when you have all these regulatory agencies stepping in your face, how you're gonna develop properties, it's hindering our new growth. So it's a double, it's a sucker punch to the, to us, the municipality, right, and revenue. It's just crippling us even more. And that's the problem that I have with big government, right?
Too many, too many mandates that are working against each other.
Correct, it's counterintuitive, you got one person telling you, yeah, let's go do X, Y, and Z, but then you got another agency over here telling you, well, wait a minute, you can't just do that. Like, well, wait a minute, you wanted me to do it on this side of the equation, but now you're telling me, who wants to do this? I, I know people personally, over the last year, two years, in this town, that were looking to do development, certain aspects, add-ons of development, and they just said, it, it's, it's way too costly, I'm, I'm taking that out of the equation, it's not even, not even my thoughts anymore. So it's happening, right? And it's gonna happen even more and more and more if government wants to decide, let's just kill the economy and make everything so detrimental to people, it ain't gonna incentivize anybody to take chances anymore, right? Capitalism, they're trying to kill that, right? And that's, that's the wrong approach right now. We're all sitting here talking about one point seven, one point eight million dollar deficits, and yet we're gonna be kicked in the teeth when we try to promote certain zoning to bring in developed, you know, revenue.
Yep.
And, and we're just getting kicked all the time.
Correct.
And we can do whatever we want, but the reality of it is, is that if it isn't affordable for somebody to do it as a businessperson, they're not gonna do it.
Not gonna do it.
And that's pretty much where we're, we're, we're starting to head down that path because of the regulatory fears of our government. So, that's that, so we'll just, uh, we'll figure out what that's gonna be. I guess we're gonna have some, some little power with our, in town engineer on Thursday morning.
Correct.
And we'll get, we'll get a little more update of what the, what the town's needs are gonna be moving forward and how we're gonna make it coincide with our stormwater bylaw moving forward. So that's that, no action needed. Town administrators' report, nothing other than the bad news we already got.
Yep.
Okay, I'll take it. Mr. Hinkley, um, selectmen's announcements?
Uh, I do have absolutely nothing this week.
And I have absolutely nothing as well. Is the next meeting, um, Mr. Kelly, you said something about. Yeah, next week, next Tuesday, but you said something about O C having something else to do, so they, they're gonna be first on it, but they're on a time constraint. Would it be, would it be in, better to have them, the meeting scheduled for four instead of four-thirty, to give them a little more time to move about?
It would be.
So, Mr. Hinkley, can you do four?
Twenty-seventh.
Next Tuesday, uh?
Absolutely.
So.
I'll call her.
Let him know, just to give him a little bit more time. Look, it's gonna be, you know, the regular conversations that we always have, but I don't want him to show up and have to run out the door because he's got another, and I know he's got another appointment, I don't know what time that appointment is, but in consideration for him and his staff, if he's got his staff coming, we'll give him a little extra time to move about.
Well, we'll tell him the board needs more time with their machetes for his budget.
So, um, you know, we'll, we'll figure out that discussion come Tuesday, but you're okay at four?
Yep, just locked it in.
All right, so can we make sure that we schedule our next meeting? I'll make sure when I do the agenda at the end of the week with you.
At four.
It's four, if I was in June. February twenty-seventh, four P M. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.